If we could please call to order the council meeting of October fourteenth, and if the clerk could please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Vice President.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Washington.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are seven members present in Quorum. Councilmember Spitzley is absent.
As we rise for meditation and the Pledge of Allegiance, if we could remember Councilmember Spitzley's father, James Grant, who passed away on October 2nd. They are, the family went to Florida to take her father home to that community for a burial. Also, on October 7th, Robert Brown Jr. passed away, and those of you who know him know that he was a dedicated public servant. He served for thirty-two years on our fire board as a fire board commissioner, and it will be gratefully missed. Is there anyone else that has someone that they'd like to remember? Councilmember Washington.
I'd like us to remember our labor folks in the UAW that are still on strike, and that have their families, please, in your thoughts and prayers as they go forward, because I know this is a sacrifice.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? With that, if we could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You have for your approval the printed council proceedings of September 30th?
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the approval of the council proceedings from September 30, 2019.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously.
And we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilmember comments. Do we have any councilmember comments tonight? Councilmember Hussein.
First, I'd like to say thank you to everybody that came out to our constituent contact meeting this past Saturday. It's truly appreciated. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 9th, 10 to 12. This is at 5825 Wise Road, which is the Alfred Schmitt South Side Community Center, so mark your calendars. We have several neighborhood meetings that will take place in southwest Lansing this week. Tomorrow Churchill Downs will be meeting at 6:30 at Wainwright School, that's 4200 Wainwright Avenue. This is their annual meeting, so they are asking folks, if you can, to bring a dish to pass. Colonial Village will be meeting the next night, which is Wednesday, October 16th, at 7:00 PM. That meeting is at Grace United Methodist Church at 1900 Boston Boulevard, and I do believe there will be a representative for, from the city clerk's office to discuss voting updates and things of that nature. And then Luton Rich will be meeting the following night, Thursday, October 17th, and that is at 7:00 PM at Mayflower Church, and that's located at 2901 West Mount Hope. Thanks so much.
Are there other council comments at this time? Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would also like to thank everybody that came out to my constituent contact meeting last Saturday. We had a couple representatives from the Board of Water and Light discuss smart meters and the recent bill increase. So thank you. My next contact meeting will be November 9th as well, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at Fire Station 44, that's 1435 East Miller Road. It's in between Aurelius and Pennsylvania. And I also want to give one update. There's a South Lansing business fall team-up to clean up event that's happening October 23rd from 1:30 PM to 4:00 PM, and that will be at the St. Michael's Church behind Target off Edgewood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other councilmember comments? The announcement I have is, since we won't have another council member before, or council meeting before this happens, October 23rd is Tuesday evening, is rejuvenating South Lansing's meeting, and that is held at 6:30 at the South Side Community Center on Wise Road. This will be their fifth anniversary, and so this meeting is celebrating five years of working diligently in the south end to try to make a difference, and the public is invited. And again, that's at 6:30. So we'll turn it back to the clerk.
Thank you, and I will just take a moment to remind folks that we do have a city election coming up in three weeks from tomorrow. There's still plenty of time to get an absentee ballot under the new election changes in the past year. Everyone is eligible to vote absentee or on Election Day, so you can contact my office at 4834131 for additional information about voting opportunities, or visit us at lansingmi.gov/clerk.
Okay.
And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience who has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
This Saturday is the Friends of Lansing Historic Cemetery's annual fundraiser event, the 5K Run Walk Race to Restore. It's at 10 o'clock in Mount Hope Cemetery, and the run is entirely inside Mount Hope Cemetery. You can register online until Thursday at runsignup.com under Race to Restore, or you can come to packet pickup and late registration. Packet pickup is Friday from 4:00 to 6:00 inside the cemetery, and early registration Saturday morning begins at 8:30 inside the cemetery. So again, the race is at 10:00 on Saturday at Mount Hope Cemetery, the Race to Restore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events? Okay, seeing none, we are to the registration for public comment on legislative matters. If you wish to speak tonight at the council meeting on legislative matters, which includes the scheduled public hearings, the items listed on the consent agenda, resolutions for action, ordinances for introduction or passage, please, you need to get up and sign the blue sheet pretty quickly. We'll be collecting that in just a couple of seconds. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shor.
Thank you. First, I want to congratulate a whole variety of groups that have had things. I don't want to take too long, so I'll roll through them quickly. The Greater Lansing Food Bank had a great empty bowls event. Boys and Girls Club had a wonderful dinner. We had the groundbreaking for the Red Cedar Project, which is now moving, yay. The chili cook-off was incredible. If you haven't tried any of the chilis there, they were great. The NAACP had an awesome Freedom Fund Dinner with a great speaker. For everybody who missed it, the AKA Gourmet Gents happened over the weekend, and Chief Green made his Patty LaBelle's mac and cheese, and it was delicious. And I made chicken parmigiana, so if you weren't there, you missed it. I make good chicken parmigiana. Not much else, but I make good chicken parmigiana. In terms of upcoming stuff, we have a lot coming up also. Paesanos, we have our ribbon cutting for paesanos on the north side, which has a new facade, thanks to our facade program. I have not seen it yet, but I heard it's incredible, so I'm looking forward to cutting the ribbon tomorrow. On Thursday, we're going to do our new parking system press conference, which should be exciting with a new parking app and new system for our downtown parkers, as well as our, the new technology in our parking garages, so that's 10:00 AM. I have written down downtown somewhere, so I'm not sure where yet, but I assume we'll have an advisory going out, but that's exciting. Friday, the Davies Project has a ribbon cutting at 1:00 PM at 230 South Bingham Street, where they're relocating. Saturday is our mobile food pantry at 9:00 AM at Friendship Baptist Church. We also have our neighborhood program launch at First Presbyterian Church at 10:00 AM, where the 2020 applications for all our programs and grants will be available for our Walking Wednesdays and our cleanups and other things. We'll also be welcoming our newest members to our Neighborhood Advisory Board. And Sunday is the Apple Butter Festival at Fenner, which is incredible. I know, I know I have been a celebrity stirrer there before, and I know our chief Mackey is doing it, and I have already showed him how to do it. I know Jeremy's nodding. I'm assuming you, I think you were there last year doing stirring also, weren't you? So it's always a lot of fun. The Apple Butter Fest is a good time, so I hope folks will partake in all the incredible activities, even though it's getting cold, we still have a ton going on here in Lansing. Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, that includes the items listed on the consent agenda, resolutions for action, and ordinances for introduction. I do want to note that the ordinance for passage, there was an error, and that will not be considered this evening, so the Z8 2018 will not be up for passage this evening. And as soon as we get an overview from councilmembers of the public hearings, we'll go to the public.
Yes. So the first one is Councilmember Washington.
The public hearing that we have before me is, it's the ordinance to amend Chapter 288, Section 288.10 and 288.14, and add 288.20. This is a housekeeping matter. It's to correct the names of various city departments and specify the minimum requirements for the director of each department. Like I said, it's just actually a housekeeping matter to bring the ordinance up to current language.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hussein, number two.
Number two, three, four, and five, actually. So number two is in consideration of Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act District. This is for ANC Holdings for property at 1611 East Kalamazoo Street. Just very quickly, the applicant in this case is ANC Holdings LLC, they're a subsidiary of the Allen Neighborhood Center. The reason for the request is that they actually obtained this property in 2018. They would like to redevelop and rehab this property by rehabbing the two-story complex, adding a third floor to the building along K Zoo, Kalamazoo, and constructing three-story additions on both the east and west end of the building in total. The project will create about 50,000 square feet of space. Thirty thousand square feet of that will be residential, 20,000 of that will be commercial space. Regarding the residential space, that will be configured into 29, what we're calling age-friendly mixed-income units. There were some comments that they're hoping 50% will be 55 and above. In terms of commercial, in addition to the Allen Neighborhood Center, as well as the incubator kitchen that is there now, there will be an accelerator kitchen, which is kind of the next step for the graduates from the incubator kitchen. The ISD is actually looking at a space for culinary arts program, programming for late teens. The building was determined to be obsolete by our city assessor. It was constructed in stages from 1932 to 1970. There are varying ceiling heights, the floor plan was deemed to be convoluted, the heating cooling systems outdated, and Phase One determined that contamination does exist. There was a gas station on this site, there was a lawnmower repair business on this site and the like. We do have Joan Allen, or, I'm sorry, Joan Nelson in the audience, and I want to thank her. I did spend probably about an hour on-site last week, just so I could really kind of wrap my mind around what they're looking to do here, and it was, it was a great meeting. I really appreciate all the work that they're doing. In terms of number three, in consideration of Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act Certificate, so this is not a district, the district had already been established, so this is the certificate. It's a 12-year certificate for Blackboard District LLC for the property at 1030 South Home Street. This is the Holmes Street School site. The applicant in this case is Blackboard District LLC. The reason for the request is that they're looking to convert the three-story structure into 41 studio and one-bedroom apartments. These will be market rate apartments. The total investment will be $2,469,620. Was determined to be functionally obsolete by the city assessor for a myriad of reasons. In terms of the rehab, includes electrical, plumbing, and HVAC overhaul, roof repairs, new kitchen cabinets, countertops, drywall, flooring, masonry repairs, asphalt, and landscaping. They are looking to begin construction in the spring of 2019. They're hoping to be done by June of 2021, and again, this is a 12-year certificate. Lastly, in terms of number four and five, these both deal with the intention to create what are called corridor improvement authorities. There is, there was a little bit of confusion, I've heard from a few people. We actually had a public hearing back on September 23rd for both of these. I believe when we published notice for the public hearings, we did not put in, was it the, was it the time or the location? We forgot to publish the location. So this is actually the second public hearing that we are having for the intention to create these two corridor improvement authorities. In terms of the Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority, the Development District, sorry, let me see, is North Grand River from Frenette Road to Old US 27 on East North Street, with branches on North MLK, Turner, and Capital City. Includes all commercial property found within 500 feet of the center line of those roads. And then in terms of South MLK, the Development District would include commercial properties found within 500 feet of the center line of South MLK from the railroad tracks that are just south of Victor all the way to I-96.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Hussein. Before we call our first speaker, we did receive a letter from David Lambert in support of the Oprah for the Holmes Street School, and I will give that to clerk for the record. With that, we'll...
Okay, our first speaker is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Tim Hunt.
Okay.
Okay, Tim Hunt. Tim Hunt?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, since we have no speakers...
We are to the consent agenda.
Would you like the referrals?
Oh.
That's okay.
We just discussed this. I'm a little off tonight.
That's all right.
Okay, referring the public hearings, number one, the ordinance to amend Chapter 288.
Back to General Services.
Number two, the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act District.
And that would go back to development and planning.
Number three, the Oprah Certificate.
That would go back to development and planning.
And number four, the Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority.
Also back to development and planning.
And number five, the Martin Luther King Jr. Corridor Improvement Authority.
And that too would go back to development and planning.
Okay, we are now to the consent agenda.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I'd like to pull items one, two, three, and four, leaving on items five and six, a confirmation of Shawn Hammond for the Parks Board, and confirmation of outside legal counsel for the Board of Water and Light.
Okay, so...
I move the consent agenda as amended.
So the consent agenda would have the Parks Board appointee and the outside counsel for the Board of Water and Light. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action by Councilmember Hussein.
Councilmember Hussein.
So the resolution of reappointment for Lori Ann, I'm sorry, Lori Adams Simons, the Third Ward Member on the Board of Ethics, for a term to expire June 30th, 2023. Lori is a, she's a longtime member of the Ethics Board. She's been on the Ethics Board for nine years. She's chaired two times. She is a longtime public servant to the city of Lansing, in southwest Lansing in particular. She did reach out to us. She currently works with Sparrow Health System. She did reach out and discussed a desire to stay on. She has my full vote of confidence, and so with that being said, I would move the reappointment.
All right, we have a motion. The Ethics Board, the appointments are made by the mayor and the four ward council members. So with that, this is the Third Ward Council seat. All those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously. I don't believe Lori's here this evening.
No.
She's not, okay.
We are to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Hussein.
This is for a confirmation of appointment for Lori Strauss-Bommer as a member of the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority for a term to expire June 30th, 2022. We had Lori into development and planning today. She has been a resident of the city of Lansing since 1964. She's been an executive nonprofit leader since 1991. She served 16 years as Executive Director of Ellie's Place. In the last four years, she has actually been with the Community Foundation, and she is, she deals essentially directly with donors and things of that nature. Her first choice was the Arts and Culture Commission, you'll see from the application. In that application, she argued that her expertise in placemaking and strategic planning and things of that nature would serve the commission well. I think it was that that we actually saw in her that would make her a perfect fit for the Avenue, Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority, so we reached out. She actually did, sent a letter of intent, I think it was July 11th, and, or a letter of interest, I should say, and she has been vetted by the mayor's office. She does meet the city's charter's requirements. We were very, very happy with the interview today, Councilman Washington. This corridor obviously snakes its way through her ward. She was incredibly supportive, and so with that being said, I would move the appointment for Lori, nope, sorry, Lori Strauss-Bommer. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously. Is Lori here? Okay. With that, Councilmember Hussein.
This is Act 14, 2019. This is for an easement acquisition, northwest corner of Miller and Aurelius for traffic signal. We had Ann Perry, who was one of our city engineers, she was in the development and planning today. Essentially, the city of Lansing Public Service Department would like to acquire an easement to replace and upgrade traffic signals, and we need, we need more right of way essentially for the future installation of sidewalks and things of that nature at that corner. And again, that's northwest corner of Miller and Aurelius. Property owner is Jackson National Life. The easement consists of 125 square feet. It is triangular in shape at that northwest corner, and, let's see, the easement will cost the city of Lansing a dollar. The planning board did review this at their September 3rd meeting in accordance with Act 33, and they supported unanimously. We also supported unanimously in development and planning. So with that being said, I would move Act 14, 2019.
You have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
So item C is, and we can have our, our team start to make their way down into the well. This is for the setting of a public hearing, it's consideration of Brownfield Plan Number 77. This is for the 500-block redevelopment project at 501 South Capitol Avenue and 520 South Washington Avenue. We did have the development team, as well as leap into development and planning today for the initial presentation. Over the past couple of years, in terms of development planning, what we've done with Brownfields and Oprahs, and we've asked the team to come in when we actually introduce and set for the presentation, as opposed to the night of the public hearing. We think it's important that city council members have an opportunity to digest the information, come up with their questions and comments, as well as the public. So we do have the team on hand. They are going to, I would assume we're going to start with Eric Helzer, but they will introduce themselves, they will present. There is a PowerPoint in your supporting materials document, City TV also has this. And so with that being said, Eric, take it away.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for having us. We appreciate the opportunity to present this project. My name is Eric Helzer with Advanced Redevelopment Solutions, and I'm handling the incentives process here, as well as the Brownfield activities on this site. Into my right, I have Will Randall with True North Development. Will is the project manager for the 501-block LLC and 502-block LLC entities, which I'll explain a little bit more and how that is all related in the Brownfield Plan. With that, I will begin the presentation. First time with the clicker, so I'll be looking up there to make sure I got this thing going right. Okay, so the property, as far as its location, it's got great highway access. We're just north of 496. We are sandwiched right in between Capitol Avenue and Washington Avenue. The property has great walkability and bikeability amenities. We have a very high walk score, which is what we like to look for in mixed-use projects, especially in downtowns. We also have a lot of key assets, as you all know. And on the very next slide, in Slide 4 of your packet, there's a little list of the most important that are valued in the market study that was conducted by the development team. And you can see most of them there, but we've got, we're close, immediately close, right across the street from a park, great restaurants and shopping. We've got the Grand River, which is a great asset to a downtown, to have a river flowing through it, very close to the library, to Cadet Transit Hub, the new Urban Meyer. It's going to be great for our residents in this project to be in downtown, to have access to fresh produce and shopping. You've got the historic museums of the state, the ballpark, of course, and you can't forget, you know, hospitals and pharmacies, and these are all pieces and qualities in the market study that they look at and they measure, especially when we go to financing in downtown and urban areas. Next slide talks about the two entities. They're, both entities are single-purpose entities, both 501-block and 502-block LLC. There's a small drawing there that you see at the bottom, and you can see how the parcel configuration is laid out. 501-block LLC is the renovation, redevelopment, complete gut and renovation of the old Lake Trust building itself. 502-block LLC, it holds the balance of the property, and the first building that will be built is a new mixed-use, predominantly multifamily building, and I'll get into the details on that next. This Brownfield Plan includes only what we call Phase One. Phase One is the complete redevelopment of the Lake Trust building. It is also the new construction of a five-story building at the corner of Hillsdale and Capitol Avenue. So Building One, as we call it, is the former Lake Trust building, is six floors and a lower level. Kind of got like a, if you've all been in there, I'm sure most of you have, it's kind of like a walkout basement, so that is an effectively used area space that can be rented. And the upper four floors will have 44 multifamily market rate apartments. The lower two floors and the lower walkout piece adding to that is almost 24,000 square feet, and that's going to be all commercial. We have a primary tenant taking up two of the primary floors, and then a secondary tenant and that lower level. The project is fully financed and ready for construction for this part of Phase One. Building Two, which will start later in the spring, it has scheduled a June start, is going through the design process right now and financing to be secured in late spring. That is a new construction, a brand-new building, five floors, 116 multifamily residential units, and then approximately 3,500 square feet of commercial at the corner of Hillsdale and Capitol Avenue. Full-time equivalent jobs with this particular phase is 14. And why I say phase, there is another mixed-use building that is contemplated upon the success of the Phase One, which again is the, those two buildings I just described, and it would be a third building that would be along Washington Avenue. And that building, oop, thank you, Madam President, that third building would be very similar right now in concept, and it is again upon the success of the residential market rate units. The market study and the lenders are fully supported by what you have as Phase One in the Brownfield Plan, and they will be very happy to finance and support a Phase Two project upon the success of Phase One. It's taken us a long time to get here with this approach, but we have everybody from the financial world behind us on this structure for downtown. Going to the next slide, you can see this illustrated in how we break this down. Of course, Phase One that I just described, predominantly along Capitol and Hillsdale, and then you see the location of the future Phase Two project. The reason we are locating the mixed-use building currently at the corner of Hillsdale and Capitol as a first-phase mixed-use building is because we want to preserve, and this is a really important aspect of our consideration, we want to preserve the ability to bring as much commercial and activate Washington Avenue with that Phase Two building once it comes online. If we were to flip the building onto the Washington Avenue corridor piece, in today's market with the excess commercial and retail space that we have mainly on Washington Avenue, our retail would fail. And it has been recognized, we have talked to lenders on that, they would not even finance a building on Washington Avenue with the amount of retail that we would like to put along the streetscape. So in order to give us an opportunity, we need bodies, we need more people living downtown, and, and we're all, you know, in support of that. We're hopeful that not only with our project, but the old YMCA site, the Metro Place project... We're hopeful that not only with our project, but the old YMCA site, the Metro Place project coming online next year, that the more bodies that we have, the more people living downtown, that then our retail on the Washington Avenue building in Phase 2 will be more successful. So I just want to share with you the thought process that we've been going through, and that's a very quick summary, there's many other factors that Will's been dealing with in this process. So the Brownfield plan has a total in Phase 1 of $31.2 million.
Can I stop you?
Oh, sure thing.
Vice President Spatafor.
Could you go back one slide, please?
You sure can. There you go.
I just really want to commend you on a couple of things. One is the forward-thinking about the retail on Washington and how important it is to preserve those spots instead of just throwing up a parking structure there or something along those lines. That's really good for downtown development, and I very much appreciate that. And I also have noticed that you're putting the parking in the middle of the development, not on the street, so you're actually engaging the streets, and I think that's wonderful. And I just wondered also, does two-way streets on Capitol have any impact on what you're hoping to accomplish there?
Yeah, but it's kind of funny, I'm glad you mentioned that, and we talked about this in committee. If you can kind of see, they're small, there's some cars going in the north direction and parking along Capitol, and you can see the line. We have, in the drawing, contemplated and also for our parking counts, considered and are looking forward to the two-way street. And so we have embraced that fully. We fully suspect that that will occur, and we will accommodate that in whatever way we need to as part of our development, in the form of easements and access to be able to reconfigure sidewalks and so forth in order to make that happen. You'll see in a couple of other slides where we've built that in, and there's some other renderings that actually show this better, and be happy to stop in that slide, and we can talk about that.
I'll hold my questions till then. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
So with the designs and the parking space for where Phase 2 would be, I guess was there any, I mean, you know, parking lots are good, I know you have your counts and everything, but is there any like placemaking, is that the word, or other attraction that was ever contemplated besides the parking lot there?
Yep, so, and I can have Will Randall here speak to this a little bit more, but at the corner of Washington and Hillsdale, for example, there is a couple of concepts right now that we can speak to that we'll hopefully be bringing to you in a Phase 2 project. We've talked about that being a more active corner, where it would be maybe tied in with a restaurant, outdoor seating area, bringing that corner a little bit more to life as you're driving north along Washington Avenue, entering the city. One of the things that I do, this is probably a good time to share with you, and I have Will speak to this, it's about the parking, and we knew, we know we have this kind of, this ordinance that allows us to have this seasonal, not seasonal, but the timed parking with the night versus the day for the residents. But through that process, I'll let him share with you what we've encountered.
Part of the, good evening. Part of the reason for the replanning of the project has been that the lending community wants to see the parking for the project on the site, pure and simple. Now, in a real urban environment where on-street parking has proven itself over time, they might be willing to recognize that into the future as we take a look at, to see how this pilot program works. But for now, they're expecting us to park 100% of the needs on the block where the units are located. As we proceed and fill the first, to the first phase, excuse me, then potentially we can put another building on Washington and reduce the parking requirements or replace with the parking structure, but to come up with some kind of a shared parking plan. But for now, the goal has been, in order to get the first phase built, is to park the needs of the block on the block.
So, one of the forward-thinking things that the development team has done is they have acquired, how many blocks away, the Cherry?
It's two, a two-block, two-block walk, the Cherry Hill Lot.
We call it the Cherry Hill Lot. It is immediately east of the site, and that will be dedicated, that will be, it's currently a parking lot, it'll be an improved parking lot, and as Phase 2 moves forward, that will support that parking off-site. So we firmly believe in the urban approach, that parking does not need to be on-site, but this was a requirement and approach that we needed to do to prove to our lenders that we can do this, and that the pilot program as well as the off-site parking that we have will be sufficient for that parking.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep. So getting back to the project overall investment, Phase 1 only is $31.2 million. Will's going to give you a little breakdown on that. Of that, the actual Brownfield eligible activity costs, which I'll break down this number a little bit later, is about $7.2 million in hard costs of construction based on those Brownfields.
So the breakdown of the Phase 1 project consists of the two buildings, as Eric had mentioned, just to give you an overview on Slide Number 10. We're looking at Building 1, which is the redevelopment of the Lake Trust building. We're excited that it's now a mixed-use project, not 100% commercial. We've got a great tenant going in the first two floors, and it'll be an $8.6 million project into the, for the renovation into the mixed-use building. We'll be starting the, as soon as the Brownfield is approved, we'll be starting the asbestos abatement on that building sometime in the November, December of '19 time period, with a completion in August of '21. We're contemplating origination of the loan for Building 2, which is $22.6 million for the newly constructed mixed-use building along South Capitol and West Hillsdale. It will start sometime around, on or around August, September of '20, with a completion of May 1 of '22. We do intend to bring the Lake Trust building on with those 44 units prior to the completion of the second building. Just to give you an idea, I know the development committee had asked some questions about this. The 44 units in the Lake Trust building consist of four efficiency units, 28 one-bedroom units, and 12 two-bedroom units. The new building consists of 12 efficiency apartments, 71 bedroom, and 34 two-bedrooms. So the total is 160 units, consisting of 16 efficiency apartments, 98 one-bedroom, and 46 two-bedroom apartments. I've got square footage ranges and price points if you're interested in hearing that, but I'll be glad to expand on that.
Vice President Spatafor.
I graduated before the state had rigorous requirements. Could you just give me the total again?
The total units is 160.
160, okay.
Consisting of 16 efficiency apartments, 98 one-bedroom, and 46 two-bedroom apartments.
Thank you.
So let's go to our next Slide 11. This shows a better view, Councilman Spatafor, along the Capitol Avenue corridor. We feel like that that's a much more appropriate place for the residential, for the private residential along Capitol and Hillsdale, to energize that corner diagonally across from Reuter Park, which we certainly hope will use as a real amenity for the project. Flip on over to Slide Number 12. Again, that gives you another angle. That is taken from, let's see, that's at the intersection of Lenawee and Capitol, looking down Capitol. Flipping to Slide 13, you'll see that we have, we have commercial space along the street front of Capitol. Then, as you turn the corner on Hillsdale, we're showing a screening of cars parked below the building, on a portion of that building. Again, the need for, to eliminate commercial space and add parking is what drove that decision. As you flip to 14, Eric's now going to give you a little bit more of a rundown on the parcels involved here.
So again, there are two parcels. The Lake Trust building is an eligible property based on two factors. One, it's a facility, it's a contaminated property, and it is also functionally obsolete deemed by the assessor. Two main factors in the functional obsolescence, one is the massive amount of asbestos that's in the building in order to ready that building for redevelopment. The second main component is the antiquated and very costly heating and cooling system throughout that whole building, which has really created quite a bit of fits and starts and stops with this project here over the last year as we've been working with about every trade possible to see what we could do to save that particular heating and cooling system. Then the balance of that parcel, the majority of the parcel along Washington and Hillsdale, is a facility, a contaminated parcel. At the corner of Lenawee and Washington was a former gas station site at that corner right across from the convenience store there. That is lending itself to a lot of the contamination. This is also a development site that is in its third life, so to speak. There are existing foundations from old buildings, from homes, businesses that were there, that were ultimately just pushed into the basements or the crawl spaces on some of them. So we're building on a lot of fill, so we have a lot of urban debris and fill mixed in that has created hotspots of contamination, very localized, that just based on the material probably that was in there at the time that was identified. So we have to deal with all of that. So that's what qualifies the property. Going to the Slide 15 is a breakdown on the costs. As you can see, the environmental is nearly about three-quarters of a million dollars. That is just for Phase 1, by the way, that, all of these costs. That number will go up in a Phase 2 and require a Brownfield Plan amendment if we were to build that second building on Washington Avenue, and then we'd have to deal with more of the contaminants in the ground, especially from that former gas station site and the fill areas along Washington Avenue. So the total cost, adding in the non-environmental, to develop obligations is about $9.8 million. And in there, you can see it's about $2.6 million alone, just with the asbestos abatement. Very expensive building to renovate. And then all of the interior demolition that's necessary, it is a complete gut job, as I mentioned before, to redevelop this property. We are doing a substantial amount of infrastructure improvements. We are surrounded by four city streets, as you see there. There's quite a bit of utility work, site work that has to be done, connections have to be done. We've been working with all the departments on that over the last couple of years. Sidewalk improvements and landscaping and the like, that makes up a good chunk of the infrastructure that I just mentioned. We have kept inside of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority's policy of interest at 3%, even though the state statute allows us, and through MUDC allows us to go to 5%. So we have been able to make that work, and we're at the contingency of 15% on the plan. Now adding to that 9.8, and how we get to 11 million is, we're affording the opportunity for the Brownfield Authority to get some administrative fees and also into the revolving fund for the authority. Both of those pots are $371,000. A little bit of redevelopment fund implementation to the authority. And then a big chunk of this is to the state. This is the state's fund that they are allowed to set up. Basically, the authority is required to capture three mills, and for this particular plan, it's for the life of the plan, and then they get to use that for state activities and hopefully other Brownfield sites that come back to the city. Going to the next slide, Slide 16. This Brownfield plan is a 19-year capture plan, is a total duration of 20 years. We are recognizing a base year, however, of 2020. The reason for that recognition, we're able to do that under the statute, is that we're trying to get a lower base by the time we do all the asbestos abatement on the Lake Trust building, as well as demolish a smaller building which was along Washington Avenue. Again, that was a Lake Trust building that's been vacant for the last several years. The first year of plan capture then is 2021. We have worked with the authority closely on this. We have agreed to a capped Brownfield plan, 23 years for the capture period, but the total plan duration will not be greater than 24 years. This allows that four-year additional time, based on the projections, allows us to have some flexibility in the market, should we get a recession, should other factors happen, should the taxable value not be quite there, should lease-up be a little bit slower, because this is all a rental property and is based on income and taxable value based on the income that is generated from the project. So that gives us a little bit of flexibility, and our lender is acceptable of that, which is probably the most important thing. Going to the next slide, Slide 17. This breaks down the various dollars and where it comes from, whether it's from local taxes or state taxes. 30% of the taxes that are coming back into this project are from state taxes. So I think that's an important factor. It is not solely a local plan. If you want to go to the three lines up from the bottom, starting there, what's going to the developer, local taxes to the developer of this project are about $6.5 million, where the state taxes are $3.2 million. Going to Slide 18, and got one more after this, and I'll be done. This, I think, is an important slide for the city. Another thing by policy, if we can do it, if we can make it work, of course, is a continuation and 10% pass-through to the taxing jurisdiction. So we have been able to maintain that, that is factored in, in this 19 years of capture period. So if you look at that, along with the city debt, just looking at the City of Lansing, over that 19-year period, that's an additional $434,000 that is not there today over that 19 years, once this project's redeveloped. Just Phase 1 again, gets better after Phase 2. The total cumulative amongst all taxing jurisdictions, the gain over that 19 years is $2.2 million. So a good and impressive number for pass-through and sharing of taxes. And last but not least is our schedule. We're working closely, we let staff talk about schedule, and LEAP talk about schedule and how to proceed. But our plan is, immediately after adoption of the Brownfield plan, is to file the Act 301 work plan for both the environmental and non-environmental approval. We're hopeful that we can start construction immediately upon Brownfield Plan adoption. We do have a committed lender, it's
Chemical Bank.
Chemical Bank has committed to Phase 1, so that's locked in. And like I mentioned before, Phase 1, Building 2, will begin in late spring, and that financing, we already have lenders lined up for that, but there's some things yet we have to put together in order for them to confirm and commit to the financing for that. So with that, I'll take any questions, and again, we appreciate your time.
Are there any additional questions? Councilmember Hussein, Councilmember Garza.
Just, well, I just wanted to go over the timeline very quickly. Chris Klein from LEAP worked very hard on the timeline. Our office manager, Sherry Bok, did as well. So what will happen is, the public hearing will be October 28. At the conclusion of the public hearing, that will be referred back to development and planning. We will take a look again at development and planning November 18, and then it will be back before council, if everything proceeds smoothly, back before council November 18 for final passage.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. So I guess I'm just here to encourage you to please reach out to local labor. I know we spoke at development planning earlier today. You know, it's a little uneasy feeling, you know, knowing that Whelan's going to be the project manager. They did the project on Dunkle. They don't have a history, a very good history at all with hiring local labor, and I know that's how the Dunkle project ended up being. So if you could please, I know you guys want to start construction this fall, so near real soon, so if you could please sit down, have a meeting with the building trades, we much appreciate that.
It's funny that you, we talked, I know at committee, but after committee, we got an email, and we do have a time set with labor, so we will be meeting with them within the next two weeks.
Before I call on Councilmember Washington, then I have to assume, Chris, that this is not under the mayor's new executive order.
Correct, yeah. So this would be under the previous UDA. There is additional language in that, though, that
The addendum, the letter addendum.
Correct. So there's the local labor and the income tax portions that are going to be part of this agreement as well, that essentially mirror what's in the new agreement. But overall, the body of it is the previous agreement.
Can we make sure that we have that for the public hearing?
Absolutely.
The signed copy. Councilmember Washington.
Just probably from my own edification, can you tell me a little bit of something about True North Development? I've not heard of this before.
Okay. True North Development is my company, I'm a principal in the company. We are a development services group. We do project management. We're currently doing project management on multiple projects for the investor that is, that owns the 500 block. We're working with him on active projects in Bath Township, Meridian Township, one project that's active, another large project that's pending in Village of Oakmoss, downtown Oakmoss Project. And we are under contract with him to facilitate and coordinate the development of this project.
Okay. May I ask who the investor is?
Yes, Patrick Smith, Santa Barbara, California.
Thank you. With that, Councilmember With that, Councilmember Hussein, we have a motion.
So move.
We have a motion to set the public hearing for October 28th. Are there any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. And if we can just have that one item taken care of, Chris, when it comes for the public hearing. Next, we go in Councilmember Hussein. You have the next public hearing.
Sure. So this is a setting of a public hearing and notice of intent in consideration of terminating Brownfield Plan Number 45 for the Old Town Temple LLC. That was the developer for a property located at 502 East Grand River Avenue. So this pertains to, the subject property is the old Bethlehem Temple Church. It was built back in, I think it was 1906. It was most recently a club, entertainment venue of sorts, and City Council back in 2009 did approve a Brownfield Plan. And again, the developer at the time was Old Town Temple LLC. We have on our council agenda tonight for referral, Brownfield Plan Number 78. And in order to vet that and to potentially approve that, we have to first retract Plan Number 45. State statute does require that we allow the developer an opportunity to speak to, I should say, the past developer, Old Town Temple LLC, in an opportunity essentially to address as part of a public hearing, City Council. We have to give that development team 30 days' notice. So the public hearing would be November 18th at 7:00 PM. So with that being said, I would move the setting of a public hearing and notice of intent in consideration of terminated Brownfield Plan Number 45 for November 18th.
Thank you. We have a motion before us. Are there any questions? My only question on this would be, Councilmember Hussein, was there anything paid out on the Brownfield?
No, because the development was never executed.
All right, thank you. With that, all those in favor of setting the public hearing for November 18th, say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
We are to the Committee on General Services.
Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a resolution regarding claim disposition, Claim Number 1708. This was a claim for $558.40 in board-up fees at 2705 Gibson. This was a situation where someone called the police because the door on the house was, it appeared to be kicked in. The police came. They could not close the door because of a faulty latch, which is why they thought it had been kicked in. Co-compliance was called. They had to board up the house. And so what happened was this. The woman came in, she wanted the claim to be granted. She felt that we should have called her before they did the board up. She has a rental company. She has like 20 houses that she manages, and it was explained that the reason that they had boarded up and that they don't have time to wait to call people and have them show up is because the police officer cannot leave until the house is boarded up. So it was boarded up. She wanted us to grant the claim, but what we did do was we reduced it by $200 for, so the $558.40 was brought down to $358.40. So with that, I would move the resolution.
You have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
We are to the Committee on Public Safety.
Councilmember Hussein.
This resolution deals with fee changes, housing code fees and fines, and you'll notice that the changes that are reflected in the resolution pertain to second notice fees for both trash and grass in the same calendar year. The fees had been $75 for that second notice, third, fourth, and beyond for a number of years. This was actually brought to City Council. At least the conversation was precipitated by one of our directors in a conversation they had with the City Council members. The cost associated to these fees, it can't be a tax essentially. It's used to defray administration costs. It must be related to the cost of actually doing business. The cost of doing business has went up, obviously, wages, benefits, gas, et cetera. And so what our City Attorney's Office Economic Development and Planning Director, as well as our internal auditor, did is they kind of took a look at what those costs are, and then they recommended to the Public Safety Committee, the 75 for the second notice, the 150 for the third, and then $300 for any subsequent violation, or notice, I should say. So with that being said, and if I missed anything, President Wood, please fill in the blanks. But with that being said, I would move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose.
Aye.
One, it passes with one dissension. Thank you.
And we are to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you. The committee did meet, and we have two grant exceptions to look forward, or to approve this evening. One is for the Automobile Theft Prevention Authority Grant from the Michigan State Police. It's a purpose, the purpose of the grant is to assist in the prevention of motor vehicle theft. Law-able uses do include personnel of one police officer dedicated to auto theft prevention program. The vehicle leased and purchased, office supplies, investigative supplies, and specific membership dues associated. It's $168,557,000, of which $158,092 goes to personnel, $10,465 to goods and services, and there's a 40% match of $67,423 from the city of Lansing, and I move acceptance of the grant.
We have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? The one question I normally ask with this is, because this is a grant that we've had before, the statistics on the amount of recoveries that they've had.
That question was not asked at committee. No one brought that up.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Spatafor.
The next item is a grant-
I'm sorry.
I answer to just about anything. The other is a grant accepted for the Office of Highway Safety Planning Grant from the Michigan Office of Highway Safety Planning. It is a smaller grant of $12,391, of which $9,346 is personnel and $3,045 is other. The city match here is $1,869 for personnel. The grant will fund overtime costs for law enforcement officers to implement an evidence-based, highly visible enforcement program on pedestrian and bicycle safety laws to educate community members about potentially dangerous walking, cycling, and driving behaviors, and enforce traffic laws designed to protect them. Personnel amount of $9,346 consists of $7,477 in federal funds and a $1,869 match from the city. The sub-recipient amount of $3,045 is amount to Lansing Community College and consists of $2,436 in federal funds and $609 in matching funds by LCC. We just passed those dollars along to them.
We have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Is there a time-
I'll just make it official. I do move the grant.
I thought I heard that. I'm sorry.
I didn't.
Are there any timeframes on this, when this has to be utilized, or?
It wasn't mentioned. Well, the grant cycles October 1 through the, of this year and September 30th of next year. It's a one-time grant. This is our third time receiving the grant.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. We have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the city of Lansing, Michigan, for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1246.02 of the Code of Ordinances. Z92019, parcel number 33010116 for 28131, 100 block of South Large Street from G1 Business District to H Light Industrial District is introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning, read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Hussein.
So this property is actually part of Liskey's parking lot. It's the southernmost portion of the parking lot. Interesting enough, their parking lot is actually situated over three parcels of land. Back in 2018, Pat Gillespie started to put purchase agreements in place with a number of property owners to make a 600-block project work. Ultimately, this particular property was never bought. And so as it stands, because we know that Gillespie came before us for a rezone, we actually rezoned this from H Light Industrial to G1 Business District at that time, as it stands, because this property will remain a parking lot in perpetuity, it's a non-conforming use. You actually have to have an SLU under G1 Business District to have a parking lot. And so the applicant is asking essentially for us to rezon it back to H Light Industrial. Our planning board has recommended approval. Our zoning administrator has recommended approval, and the public hearing would be November 18th. So with that being said, I would move the public hearing for November 18th.
We have a motion on setting the public hearing. Are there any questions or concerns? The question I would have for the city attorney is, since the applicant that originally applied for the rezoning didn't own the property, how did we, I'm sure it was on contingency that they would buy it, but then when it didn't get bought, isn't there a provision that we can put in upon sale that the rezoning would become effective, not, you know?
Either it's devoted up or down, based upon the information you have in front of you. So if you don't have a proper applicant there, either somebody on a purchase agreement or an option, then it's either got to be up or down, not a conditional.
It's something I'd like us to look into. We don't have this happen very often, but we do have times when something comes through to us that it's in the process of being sold, and then the rezoning has changed, the sale doesn't go through, but what we were told it was going to be rezoned for doesn't come into fruition. But that rezoning has a caveat of different areas that can, different things can go in there that then limit us to be able to do anything else. So if that's something, if you could take a look at.
Okay, we will.
Thank you. With that, this is setting the public hearing. So all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are for speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's any city government issue that you would want to speak for three minutes about, and that's the yellow sign-in sheet in the back that's going to be picked up in just a couple of seconds. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you.
Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
We have letters from the city clerk regarding minutes of boards, commissions, and authorities.
Placed on file.
A recognition of nonprofit status, One Starfish.
General Services.
Executive Order 2019-007, adoption of a universal development agreement.
Committee of the whole and placed on file.
Board of Water and Light, financial reports.
Committee of the whole and placed on file.
Fireworks Display License, Ace Pyro LLC for Silverbells in the City, November 22nd.
General Services.
Letters from the mayor regarding orders to make safer demolish 818 NIP.
Public Safety Committee.
Orders to make safer demolish 819 Cleveland.
Public Safety Committee.
Orders to make safer demolish 3309 Viking.
Public Safety Committee.
Notification of a mayoral reappointment, Ryan Robinson, to the Housing Commission.
Placed on file. For those of you, this is an appointment that does not require council confirmation.
Outside Legal Counsel, Hausfeld, to represent the Board of Water and Light.
Committee of the whole and placed on file. This was voted on this evening.
Z72019, 1310 Knollwood Avenue, rezoning from F Commercial to B Residential.
Development and Planning Committee.
Grant Acceptance Victims of Care Act Victim Assistance Grant.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Brownfield Plan Number 75, Capital City Market Brownfield redevelopment project at 636 East Michigan, and a portion of 119 South Large.
Development and Planning.
Brownfield Plan Number 78, Temple redevelopment project at 502 East Cesaree Chavez.
Development and Planning Committee.
Grant Acceptance Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Grant Acceptance Sobriety Court Grant.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
And Grant Acceptance Domestic Violence Court Grant.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Communications and Petitions, a letter from the Department of Treasury regarding an audit of minimum assessing requirements review update.
Committee of the whole and Internal Auditor.
Notice from the Liquor Control Commission, the Michigan State University Board of Trustees, application to transfer a license to 3535 Forest Road.
General Services.
And claim appeal for Lewis Hanft for $3,140 in trash fees at 214 Lay Throw.
General Services.
And we are to motion of excused absence.
Vice President Spatafor.
I move to excuse Councilmember Spitsely.
We have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Are there any remarks by council members? Vice President Spatafor.
I just wanted to thank, I don't think the mayor mentioned it. I wanted to thank the fire department for hosting their open house this weekend. It was a great event, a lot of family fun. They burned some things, they used some hoses, there was some hot dogs, there was pizza. Looking forward to next year.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none.
Mayor's comments?
Mayor Shore, do you have any closing comments? All right.
And we are to public comment on city government-related matters. We have Daniel K. Arnold, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hi, everybody. God bless you all. Daniel Arnold, I'm very pleased to be here in this blessed city of Lansing. Some of you in City Council have made efforts to reach out to me. I love it here. We have an amazing new educated police chief, Green. He's accessible and really worth getting to know. Chief Darrell Green truly cares about each individual. I think the best place to be introduced to him is at the 5:30 PM Tuesday Police Commissioner Meeting at LPD Headquarters tomorrow for anybody. LPD has released a new phone app that is absolutely cutting-edge. You got to check it out. Everyone should look into it and see a new way to keep our community in communication with public safety. Go to the PlayStar and download Lansing Police Department Mobile PD App. You will find everything from crime updates to a number directory to an online tip form. The tip form is a state-of-the-art, one touch for a picture of the scene, one touch for a map location, one spot to write a crime tip with the option of anonymity. When you make a tip, you help the community. It doesn't have to be complicated, just eyes and ears. Another button allows you to view all the records of tip dialogue you have engaged in with the police. It's just amazing. Anybody can step up to the plate, any age, they can just really get involved. Stunning, LPD has responded to all my tips that I've given. I love these men and women in blue. The LPD tip line allows for officer commendations, too. You have the opportunity to praise officers for a job well done, something we really need in society these days. Since September, I've used the tip line on my phone six times. Three times for commendations, twice for drug tips, and once to alert the police to a potential dangerous person in the community. Please see how you can advocate for the Lansing Police Department. They do great work and make regular posts on Facebook as well. Go home tonight, Lansing City Council members, and download the LPD mobile app. I love my city. I support law enforcement here. Lansing's time is now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Monica Martinez.
Well, I was very surprised on October 8th, when I stopped in at the cemetery office to drop off some forms for the race to restore and saw a notice on the door saying that the office- the office would be closed on November 2nd, and that it would be shut down for several days, and when it reopened, it would be inside the Foster Community Center on the second floor. I strongly, strongly urge the city to reconsider this. I think it's a very bad move for a lot of reasons, most of which I won't have time to go into tonight. This is something that was attempted in the past and was shot down because it was a bad idea then, and it's a bad idea now. One of the reasons it's a bad idea is because of its treatment of the seniors and disabled, who typically are a great majority of the people who frequent that office. It is, we don't, we don't treat our vulnerable and fragile and highly emotional grieving people the same way you treat someone returning a library book. You are dealing with people in their most perilous and sensitive state versus dealing with day-to-day routine business transactions. They tried to do this years ago, as I said, and it was not permitted because it was a bad choice then, it's a bad choice now. There are over 125 comments about this on Facebook, and out of those, one was favorable to this, and the others were all not. This comes across as being somewhat heartless and insensitive and uncaring. Practically speaking, although technically, the Foster Community Center is labeled handicap accessible, realistically, it is not. It's certainly not private. I went over there today to check out its accessibility, rode in the elevator with a man who works there, and he told me he will not get on the elevator without his cellphone because the elevator's unreliable. If you pull into the Foster Community Center, there are three spots for handicap parking, and most of the time, they're occupied during the day, which is when people would be coming for this purpose. If you get out of your car in one of those spots, you have to walk about 30 foot to the ramp. The ramp is very long. It brings you into the building on the first floor, about one-third of the way into the building. You then have to walk the other two-thirds of the way to an elevator, which probably would not suffice to hold a motorized wheelchair. Go up to the second floor, walk halfway through the length of the building again, and then down a short hallway into an office that has space for two people in it. Quite often, when families are coming to make arrangements for burials and to choose sites, there's more than two people with them. There would be no privacy. There would be no access for people to come and look at the public records and the file cards, and it's just a bad choice all the way around. I would strongly urge the mayor and the director to reconsider this. It's a bad, bad decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Monica Martinez, and then Willie Williams. Monica Martinez, is she gone? Okay, then Willie Williams.
Evening, everybody. Willie Williams, downtown Lansing. I'm kind of appalled that there was no announcement last meeting of the debates for the election that we're about to have in three weeks. No announcements about the debates. If you have any more debates, you should tell the public immediately. That shouldn't be hidden. But then, we have the US Senate, and, yeah. All politics is local, it is said. The 2020 election starts in three weeks, people. It starts in three weeks. That's when we have, here in Lansing, our elections. And it sure looks like we have the same thing going here that we have going in the, in Washington, DC. We have our own little, little Republican list. I have decided, I have decided for myself that what I'm going to do is I'm going to, I'm going to do that. I'm not going to vote for a Republican, or an incumbent. We've got four of them running this year. Because the Republicans just ain't doing it. So I don't want them. And I want to remind those who voted besides Republican last time, enough voted from the Green Party and the UST Party and the Libertarian Party, enough voted to change the whole thing. So Democrats, we got to get out into the polls. In the primary, in Ward 1, Councilmember Washington got 40% of the votes. That means she can be beaten. And she needs to be beaten. She's very Republican. Started two, two sections ago, two, two four-year bits ago, when, when she was running first for the first time. I have so much to say, neg, that's negative about what she's done to Ward 1 and the rest of the city, that there's just no time. I now only have 40 seconds. The 11 minutes that we used to have just doesn't seem to go quite as long as the three minutes that we have now. Anyway, here's what I have so far. At large, Jackson Long, Ward 1, Betts is best. Very best. He's an economist. He lives and works economies. And there's more to say, and I'll just have to read it quickly, but it'll have to wait till next time, I guess, because I'm down to my last 10 seconds. I'll speak of donations and percentages and things like that next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
With that, we are adjourned.